Good morning.
Brother.
All right. Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Call this meeting, or regular meeting, Commissioners Court, Liberty County, Texas. It's May the fourteenth. It's about nine oh three AM. We have a full agenda today, so we're gonna get started here in just a moment. The, uh, this definitely had business for the court today. We have Commissioner Korbowski, Commissioner Rother, Commissioner Whitmire, his present Commissioner.
Big fast participant.
With us by way of Zoom. Uh, so we're gonna, we do have a full forum today.
Over sixty pounds, taking Manjaro.
I started to drink on Manjaro, um, about six months ago. It's been amazing.
We've got a little, little glitch here for a second. You got it figured out, Kyle?
I don't know if that's from us, or...
Interference from someplace else. Okay. Well, let's try it again. Okay. Here we go. All right, we're gonna see if that kicks it or not. I don't know if we're getting somebody's phone conversation or what coming in. Lee, you got any ideas on that one?
No, that was fine.
Okay. All righty. If everyone please rise, please can leave some pledges, and Sheriff's can leave some indication.
Please face the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the public in whose extent it is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please face the Texas flag.
That's why I, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one individual.
President, please. Dear heavenly Father, Lord, thank you for the blessings that you give us, Lord. Thank you for the opportunity we have to come together, discuss government. Lord, I ask that you be with the judge and the commissioners. Lord, as we go through this Commissioners Court today, and the things that they vote on, Lord, I, I just pray that they're in the benefit of everybody in the county. Lord, as you know, we've gone through some tough times lately, and I want to pray for all those that are affected by the flood, Lord. I, I thank you for the resources that you provided to come through there. I thank you for all the first responders, for the, for the law enforcement, for the volunteers, the different people that have come in to help, Lord. And I know there's a lot of devastation, Lord, and as you know, Lord, that we've been working together there. Thank you for the judge and the commissioners, and the things that they've put together, Lord. And, Lord, it's gonna take some time. I know that. And that's why I pray for patience, Lord. I pray that everybody works together as they have, Lord. And, Lord, I'm just thankful that up to this point, we know of no one in Liberty County that's lost their life because of the rising floodwaters, Lord.
Amen.
Thank you for all that you do for us. Lord, please forgive us when we fall short. In your Son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Sheriff. E, we didn't have any notices or proclamations today. Okay. We'll move on to, I remember, five public comment. Do have two folks that have signed up for public comment this morning. Eric Johnston. Are you here? Yeah, come on up, please, sir.
I've never done this. I'm supposed to stand.
Yeah, just, oh, right there is five. Yeah.
Ground, ground lit.
All right. Good morning. My name's Eric Johnston, and I'm here today because I'm residing in New River Lake Estates. We've been in this place from our homes for, going on two weeks now, which is understandable. I know a lot of people throughout Liberty County, Texas, having displacement homes. But now that the floodwaters are starting to proceed, we are still displaced in homes, and I don't know when we're gonna get back. A lot of us are looking at losing everything right now, because we don't have answers. Are we gonna get back to our homes? Are we not gonna get back to our homes? Right now, we have to go on, and the neighborhood is riddled, because the river has walked back the road, leading into other subdivisions, and we have no other sense, other than voting in through another subdivision, which is near impossible for most of us. And when I say there's only rumors, it's because we, no one has gotten a clear official statement of what is happening with our neighborhood. Right now, we've had everything from rumors of, there's a FEMA bridge coming in, that's gonna be laid across from one road into our subdivisions, and there is gonna be a road built. There's now the rumors, there's no road that's gonna be built. Supposedly, our neighborhood is gonna get condemned, and there will be no more utilities. We'll be completely on our own to figure it out. And that's why I'm here today, is not even so much to get any one particular answer, just some kind of information, so that we know how to proceed on with planning the rest of our lives. Because I know for myself, everything I have is wrapped up in that neighborhood. That's, that's everything I have, as well as the sixty other families that we did. We've got young families, elderly, people just trying to make it. Right now, everything that we have is hanging on the line. We have no answers. We just, no, no. So, I had a big, had a lot of points I wanted to get across up here today, but... The main thing is, we just need some kind of... I, I, we don't need engineered drawings of exactly what's gonna happen. We just need answers from an official capacity. Because right now, all it is, is hearsay and rumors. One person thinks, I heard this from that guy, so he said this. We have no idea. We're all just scared. Are we gonna get back to our homes? Are we gonna get back to our homes? What's happening? So... I guess that's, that's, that's the gist of what I have to say. There's a lot more I can try to be out there, but I think that's about all I can ask for.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming in. And, as y'all know, these are not items on the agenda, so we're not free to discuss these with you at this time during public comment. That's just the rules. Okay? Uh, Demetrio Laredo? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Demetrio Laredo. I live in the New River Lake Estates. I have a lot of money invested in my place, and I also put on a case for sale in accordance with the, have a few contracts worth. I can't do anything to be moving it because the road is pushed out. Uh, spoke to one of the, uh... Liberty County, something in the phrase. Well, I also have another unit at the base, but I'm listening to one that's making the decision. If they're gonna be sold at gross, he told me that there was a buyout for a property. I had never received any letters for any items for the property. If I knew about it, I would have took the buyout. They did it through those market geology, and I had seen this point, but I'm still... And the reason that they take the buyout, and there are other individuals took the buyout, they didn't have enough money to pay for the house. After they moved. Uh, from my understanding, from some of them, they still haven't received all the money for the buyout. To move on. Uh, I'm trying not to have all of us in that same predicament. Uh, we lost power, we lost water, and forced a road. My understanding is that the water district is not going to do anything to, to fix the water, which I'm on water, so it wouldn't affect me at that point for a lot of times, or... At the end of the day, sending some of that to kids work and building, and they spoke to the logging plant. They're gonna deal with temporary roads, and give the truck back there to do some underground drilling from the mailbox, and one twenty-one sixty-six was the label, underneath, make a ninety, go on to my lot, thirty-five, which I'm gonna speak to them and see if they move on thirty-six, and I'll close on the paper if they move on thirty-six. That's the last I'm probably with my house. Uh, moving up the neighborhood hours. But I'm concerned about the road. I can't move forward to sell my real estate if the road isn't existing. And this is gonna be, this will be my third real estate that I've bought in my life. And Liberty Cleveland was my third. So, don't want to lose it. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. All righty. Moving right along, um, number, I have six. Declare conflicts of interest. Nineteen. Number nineteen, number twenty-eight. Yes, yeah. Okay. Are there any others? Hearing none, move on consent agenda. Uh, Dwayne, you have any items today?
There were a bunch of amendments for, for a bridge precinct one. We're gonna put in to lose twenty thousand dollars from capital outlay to repairs and maintenance.
Ms. Harris, you have any, anything to add on?
I don't, to that, thank you.
Just in case, I was gonna ask you.
I appreciate it.
You bet. Okay. Any other items on the consent agenda to consider?
A, um, one thing I'd like to inquire about, Jay.
Yeah.
At the bottom of the consent agenda, it says approve and hire Clarissa Williams as a part-time for so much money an hour. Is this a secretarial position? Is this a deputy position? What is?
It's not spelled out.
Yeah, I'm not.
I think, uh, we could move, actually, what I'd like to do is, anything that deals with overtime, or approve new hires, or approve any payroll increase, move that to the regular agenda. Um, for discussion.
Right.
And possibly move this to the, all of those items to executive session, because it does deal with overtime, uh, pay. And I'll plainly state this. We don't have a line item in the agenda, and in our budget, rather, for overtime pay.
Right.
I don't think we know enough about those two, the last two items on that one that you're talking about, too.
Yeah.
The draft, I'd be wanting to make, approve the consent agenda with the exception of these two.
No, all the way, all the way down.
Okay, with all the way, okay, yeah. I tell you what, you're probably right. We're probably gonna go to the executive session on that.
Okay, so, y'all saying, approve JP Precinct Two longevity and vacation pay for Brandy Dryden.
And everything below that.
And well-approved intermediate certificate pay for Father Ted Smith, because that doesn't deal with any overtime. That's gonna be, everything else, we're gonna move, uh, to executive session. Correct? Is that the court's?
I thought, well, I'm...
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion and a second to approve two items on the consent agenda, but the rest from, uh, where it says approve overtime for Sergeant Wilburn Taylor, all the way down to, uh, Constable Precinct Six, approve payroll increase amount of stated number to, uh, executive session. The motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor to move this into executive session? Say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. Okay, that motion passes, and when we move to the executive session, we'll have our discussion on these items.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna be considering the addition. Thing. It's the same thought.
Right. Yeah, we've got a motion saying to approve the consent agenda, the two items on the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays.
Give us a second.
Leon.
Leon.
Okay. Number eight, regular agenda, eight point one, from Ms. Harris. Consider and approve the TCD RS plan assessment for plan year twenty twenty-five, and consider changes. TCD RS requires notification of changes no later than December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. We're gonna get out ahead of this one, right, Kim?
We're getting way ahead.
Good.
Uh, so we received the, um, notice from TCD RS of our twenty twenty-five calendar year rate, and the court has been electing a higher elective rate for TCD RS for the past several years. And our rate came in for twenty twenty-five as fourteen point seven two percent, which is a positive slight increase over twenty twenty-four's required rate. And, but the court has an elected rate of seventeen point five two percent. I would recommend that the court continue that higher elective rate, um, indefinitely. It's impacting our situation with TCD RS tremendously. Um, and as far as other changes, this would be the time, about December sixteenth, is when we need to make the decision, but it'll affect next year's budget, so I'm sorry, but, so you would need to make any, any changes, um, before that day, really, before you do the budget. But I would recommend continuing the pilot elective rate of seventeen point five two percent. Um, last year for the twenty twenty-four, uh, TCD RS plan, we were, you know, elected a six percent cost of living adjustment for our retirees. And for twenty twenty-five, I would recommend that three percent cost of living adjustment for the retirees. This would not alter the higher rate of seventeen point five two percent.
Okay. Anybody have questions?
I can motion to approve.
Okay. Motion through. Bruce, second. Greg to approve. Any further discussion? And Kim, thank you for thinking about our retirees. Again, the call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. That motion carries. Number eight-two from Sheriff Raider. Consider approve resolution to transfer ownership of K-9 Jack. Was that Jack out in the hallway while I'm here?
It's right here.
It was right there. All right.
That was him in the hallway. He didn't like Mr. Singh.
Yeah, okay. Well, he's not an Aggie dog. It's okay. Um, transfer ownership of K-9 Jack from the Liberty County Sheriff's Office to Michelle Deschutelle. Uh, K-9 Jack has served the citizens of Liberty County honorably, and he is no longer able withstand the rigors of daily service, and he will retire in a humane and dignifying manner. And I think that's worthy. That's very worthy, and, uh, thank you.
Thank motion. Second.
Motion from Leon, second from David, to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Uh.
Likewise nays. Uh, Michelle, would you bring Jack up here and let everybody see him? I mean, it, uh, it's our last chance to tell him hello, unless you wanna bring him by for another visit. Yeah.
How old is he now, Michelle?
Three what?
How old is he now?
He's nine.
Yes. So what kind of puppy is he?
He's a Dutch Shepherd.
Dutch Shepherd. Lieutenant.
Oh, he'll, well...
Great blessings. Yeah.
And that's, that's... Yeah.
It's okay, but he's, he doesn't like Billy. It's all right.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Hey, Judge.
Yes, sir.
May I read just something here that we put together?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Catherine reviewed all this and said, whereas Robert J. Bobber Raider hereafter referred to as the sheriff of Liberty County, Texas, in his capacity as chief executive enforcement officer of Liberty County, utilizes canine in law enforcement activities. Whereas from time to time, said canines can no longer function in said law enforcement activities. Whereas the sheriff recognizes that K-9 Jack has served the citizens of Liberty County honorably, and he is no longer able to withstand the rigors of daily service. Whereas it's the best interest of the service animal that the sheriff desired to place K-9 Jack in a safe and secure environment of his handler, Lieutenant Michelle Desatell, so that he may retire in humane and dignified manner to commensurate his service to Liberty County. Therefore pursuant to Texas law, the sheriff does hereby transfer the ownership of K-9 Jack, Lieutenant Michelle Desatell, who accepts and agrees to provide safe and secure environment for K-9 Jack during his retirement. Furthermore, Lieutenant Michelle Desatell agrees full, acceptable responsibility for the liabilities associated with this specially treated canine, along with any other needs and care for K-9 Jack. So, is out of the county's care of it, Michelle.
Yes, sir.
So, thank y'all.
Thank you, Sheriff. All right. Uh, number eight point three, uh, for me. Consider and approve authorizing Ted's control of public accounts to allocate a portion of the unclaimed capital credits received from electric cooperatives back to Liberty County. This is an unknown amount until the county receives the funds, but, uh, this is an annual basis. So, I've requested y'all approve this, and then we can find out what's in the surprise package from the...
Money, uh, we generally appropriate this money to retain.
Right. Yeah, we do give it to our charities, yeah.
My good brother.
Got a motion from Greg.
Second.
Second from Leon. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight point four from, uh, Mr. Brown. Tax collector, consider and approve the reimbursement of the counterfeit fifty dollars to the Liberty County Tax Office. That's, happens on occasions, uh... But I'd like to get it back to him. What's the court's pleasure?
Second.
Motion from Greg, second from Bruce to approve. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. That motion carries. Number eight point five, from our tax attorney's linebarger. Uh, consider and approve the following private resale bids. Uh, number one is M. Childers. Property ID is one oh one four five eight, for four thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-six cents. Number two, Kingwood Tech Solutions. Property ID seven four three zero five, for nine thousand six hundred and forty. And number three is R. Shepherd. Property ID three seven three eight two, for thirteen thousand. Is there any discussion? Considerate.
Approve.
Make a motion to approve all three. Second.
I believe Leon got the motion to Bruce.
Second.
Second for Bruce. Okay.
Sorry.
They call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. Just out of curiosity, these seem to be going up, as far as the sale value. Has that been the norm, uh, normal, normal trend through the last, say, twelve months?
Please, Sheriff, that's the same.
Okay. Right or no right?
Yeah, we got you.
All right. Number eight point six, uh, from Mr. Poston, Ms. McCarty, over the county attorney's office. Consider and approve resolution to remodel Liberty County Central Appraisal District office located three oh three Phantom Street, Liberty, Texas, seven seven five, seventy-five, in an amount not to exceed five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Catherine, you wanna, I've got my explanation that I received. Well, Ms. McCarty, come on up. Okay.
The other Ms. McCarty.
The other Ms. McCarty.
So, it is...
Come up a little closer.
It is a little strange. We have the funds. We're not asking tax entities for any funds. We have a, sorry, I'm moving. Hi, Liam. Uh, we have the funds. We have reserve funds that are designated specifically by statute for this, and in that reserve fund, we have five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. We are shy, thirty-five thousand, but we're not asking entities. We will, one, either pull it for next year's budget, because probably not starting construction until August, most likely, and it won't be completed prior to that, or we'll just take it up this year's bu- budget, so.
Yeah, now you have a budget here tomorrow, correct?
We do. We have a budget meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
That's correct.
And when will you pass your budget?
That will be in June.
June, okay.
Hopefully.
All right. It's close enough.
But we, we just need the board to, or this council to, Commissioner, or whatever. I've been to like five hundred of them, guys, all the halls, all cities lately.
We've been calling whatever for a long time.
A resolution. Right. Maybe go ahead and spend your money.
Yeah.
All right.
All right. We'll save the court.
To approve that.
Motion Bruce to save from David to approve. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, that said motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight-seven, uh, from, uh, Mr. Poston, Ms. McCarty, the other Ms. McCarty. Considering approve resolution with Urban Innovations Incorporated authorizing the Liberty County Attorney's Office to engage with Clip Property Owner LLC, and Urban Innovations to potentially enter into agreements, and to submit one or more applications to seek pre-application and pre-development grant funding and finance assistance to the Federal Department of Transportation and its agencies for infrastructure in Liberty County, Texas. Catherine's gonna give us a little brief dissertation on this?
Yes, that's a, I guess, a document, a resolution, if you will, with, with urban innovations that allow, subject to your approval, close up, would allow them to apply for, yes, I mean, on each behalf, under a certain heading, uh, within the Federal Department of Transportation, specifically as it pertains to infrastructure here in Liberty County.
All right. Any other questions?
Catherine?
Yes, sir.
Now, are you, you're good about this? I mean, you, uh...
Oh, yes, sir. I reviewed, uh, the agreement, and everything's all mounted up.
Make a motion with approve.
Second.
Motion Leon, second from David. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Likewise nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight point eight from, uh, Judge Fuller up in, uh, Precinct Six. Consider and approve the installation of a pass-through windows to be installed in the hallway of the clerk's office of Justice of Peace Precinct Six. Two, three oh, uh, by three oh pass-through windows, and one four oh by four oh pass-through window. Total amount for this purchase is eight thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents. Requesting funds be used from JP Technology. We can't do that, but we, but we can use building security fund?
Justice for building security.
Justice, Justice Court Building Security?
And just for public information, JP Technology, for, 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 okay, anyway, but they stood following to...
This is all on the security side, okay?
So we have a, they have a deep on this.
Right. This is another special revenue.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce.
Second.
Second from David to approve.
There we did amend that, uh, limited, yes, technology fund statement.
Yes.
Yeah, and it's...
Your motion would need to include the, the fund, the, the, the...
Justice Court Building Security.
I am due to add, uh, funds will be coming out of the Justice, what?
Court.
Court.
Yeah.
Security.
That's what I'm sure. That's it. Okay.
It's one of those ones we don't really know about.
Just to figure out what it is.
Any further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight point nine from, uh, Mr. Poston, Ms. McCarty over the county attorney's office. Consider and approve formal acceptance of donation of forty loads of coffee from Union Pacific Railroad to Road and Bridge Precinct Three. Boy, David.
Yeah.
He... I'm a hot dog.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg to approve. I don't think there's gonna be any further discussion on that one.
I didn't know.
Yeah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. And we appreciate, uh, Union Pacific helping out. That's, that's very nice. Uh, number eight point ten, again from, uh, Mr. Poston, Ms. McCarty. Discussion only regarding Liberty County's current disaster debris cleanup contract. Uh, discussion only regarding Liberty County's current disaster debris cleanup contract. I said, you're here and Harold's here, so. Y'all, whoever wants to take it, let's hear it.
Probably a combination. Uh, there are lots contacted by Commissioner Parker last week. And then, uh, we talked about potentially, uh, discussing this contract, um. With the entire court and in front of the public, given, uh, recent events, um, and. I know the public has had a lot of complaints regarding, uh, debris cleanup in the county after the flooding and after it was water was. Go down, uh, so if there's anything that the court would like to know or, um. Discuss regarding the contracts, what they can tell their constituents. This, this was the reason.
Harold, can you come up just for a minute? I've, I've got a couple of questions. Emailed, um, as far as debris cleanup, I mean, we know what we're gonna be doing. It's the placement of the debris or the access of the company that does the cleanup to, to pick it up. And I know that we've had in the past, you know, it, don't put it on the. If you put it on a private property, it's, it creates a burden to reach out and grab it. And if you put it on the county right away, it might be in the road. So I mean, I'd like to, little bit of clarification.
Yeah, we have a, uh, a debris removal contract to Crowder Golf. This up to, this up like September sixth. Uh, we have a, uh, debris monitoring. Uh, the people help us with the theme of paperwork and the active monitor, the debris removal company. We call Tetra Tech, and that's on June, that's on July thirty first. I haven't met with Crowder Golf, even though they're willing to renew. I've met with Tetra Tech, uh, and what he told me was. If, if the county can recommend property, that's great, but it's the debris removals, it's Crowder Golf's. Responsibility in the contract to go find the property and. But if we have ideas, we need to let them know. So somewhere where they can talk to them.
The other question about where to, where the folks place the debris. I mean, what, in the past, we, uh.
And what place I could bring it to. When are they gonna get started?
Well, you don't need to contact them and. They're, they're aware that we have this problem, but someone, I guess, uh, probably Mr. Ern to be like. To contact them and try to set something up.
I know before we had sent a tablet out of what type of debris it was and to separate it alongside the road.
Yeah, they have all that provided to you. Yeah, and they have, okay. I can't remember where they're out of Tennessee or somewhere, Florida, I can't remember. Uh, but they have a lot of people that work for them or in this area, y'all said Houston area that live here, so. So we probably get a pretty quick response. But we need to do it because there are other counties that are doing the same thing.
Yeah, we would like, I think, well, pretty quick and get some kind of plan going so people can know what to do with it.
Okay, I'll contact them, y'all have like a workshop with them.
That would be fine.
Wouldn't really wouldn't hurt to have a workshop.
We've got a couple ladies here that's concerned about already.
Niti, can you pick out a good date for that? Commissioners, if she calls you, just let her know what's a good date for you, and that way we can get it set up. We always want to give you all that, that opportunity. Alright, this is, uh. Discussion only, so, uh, take no action. Need a motion, second, take no action. Motion Bruce, second Greg. No further discussion, all in favor. Number eleven, uh, well, we're just wearing y'all out today, Catherine, and. Discussion potential action regarding policy for the compensation of county employees unable to attend work. During normal business hours due to natural disasters, i.e. flooding. I would like to move this to executive session.
Yeah, I would, I'll look, we do so.
Just move it on down.
Yeah, because it's already down there.
Number.
They come back.
So, take no action on this one, correct?
Skip over it because.
Alright, then in that case, number twelve, we're gonna move it to executive session as well, so we skip over it. Is that alright with everybody? And consider, number twelve was considered approved road use and master road repair agreement between Liberty County. Enterprise Ethane Pipeline. Uh, for use of county roadways in precinct one in lieu of prepaid damages. The amount of five hundred thousand. Leave that to executive session as well. We're gonna have a link to executive session. Number thirteen. For Ms. McCarty and Mr. Poston, consider approve. Permit application submitted Liberty County on February sixteen, twenty twenty four by Enterprise Ethane Pipeline. Executive session as well.
Uh, this is not listed for an executive session. This is a formal application, standard permit application. They paid their, uh, I believe, three thousand dollar fees with the permitting department. Uh, it has not been approved. You know, both the agreement and this permanent application go hand in hand, but they're not mutually exclusive.
So what say the court?
We're gonna, we're gonna approve this.
Without discussing the, yeah, I would rather not, I would rather take this at this point.
You want to postpone it till after executive session?
We'll move that down to regular, which is a. Okay, move on to. Number fourteen. From Mr. Post and Ms. McCarty, consider approve updates to development agreement between Liberty County. And Ellison Development regarding Project Gemini in Precinct Three. Liberty County to include fire and EMS services and expanding the. PID, which is, uh, Public Improvement District Term from twenty one years to twenty two years. Now, we've had this discussion, Catherine, you want to have anything you want to add to it?
Yeah, so last court y'all did approve, uh, the development agreement with, uh. Ellison Development for the Pid, y'all already created the Pid, that was done a few courts ago. But the term of that Pid was twenty one years. Well, we, as we discussed in court, um. There was a, y'all were hoping to receive a fire and next system system. From the possibility of this development. Ellison Development has generously agreed to that, that is in the terms of this. Development agreement, I believe it comes out to ninety dollars a year, uh, for. In that development, so that is now included in this development agreement. But in order to make those numbers work, uh, Ellison Development, um. Is asking that the Pid be from twenty one years to twenty two years. And because this is not a serious change, we're bringing it back to.
Now, one thing, out of curiosity, I think we discussed this before. If it's paid off prior. By, say, an individual that owns a lot there and says they want to prepay their Pid dues. This number could change from twenty two years further down, right?
Absolutely, they can pay it off and.
Got any, any discussion, questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion Bruce, second from David, further discussion. Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, may, is that motion carries. Chief, hug me on this all to help your business out. Okay, and I appreciate, uh, Ellison considering that, our, our. Our question and, uh, in addition, that is, thank you. Number fifteen, permits and inspections from Ms. Soliday. Uh, consider approve invoice number two oh two four oh three eight eight three dated. Three eight twenty twenty four in the amount of twenty nine thousand five hundred ninety five dollars invoice. And invoice number two oh two four oh eight three nine dated four six twenty twenty four, the amount of twenty five thousand three hundred thirty five dollars. For the whole freshwater well project services from LJ Engineering Incorporated using ARPA funds. Mr. Marvin Freej has signed off on both invoices, uh, Melinda, you have anything you want to add to this?
No, um, I had one of these on the last meeting, but I, the description was incorrect. I used one of my. So it is fixed and correct.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Motion Bruce, second Greg to approve, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, may, motion carries. Don't sit down anytime soon, Melinda.
No, y'all made something last week because I didn't do it last time. I didn't get it, but now I gotta make that for it.
Consider approve request from Fire Marshal to implement a reinspection fee of fifty dollars. For each reinspection they are required to do on the commercial inspections. The commercial inspections can be multiple trips or the same inspection. If approved, the permitting department will handle the invoice. Okay, makes sense, you getting called back out.
Every, every expect, we've been there two and three times, Judge, and it's just.
I mean, they give them an entire list of exactly what to have to have prepared for the inspection. They tell them that it's there and it's not.
Yes, sir.
Commercial only.
I didn't hear, uh. Yeah, it's commercial only, we, we don't get into the presentation.
Motion Leon, second from Bruce to approve, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, may. Number seventeen, consider approve request from Mr. Alders for a drainage variance. Request for Cedar Springs Section Five Development. This section will have fourteen single family lots using public water and septic systems. Melinda?
Um, yes, the Alders Company has sent me a request to do a variance. For the, um, drainage study. So I brought it forward to y'all and see what you all want to do.
Well, my question is, what do the drains look like after the recent rains we've had?
I have got plenty of video of that. It looks good. It's rough side of Tendon Pond that was supposed to have been five acres. It's like fifteen acres, so it's three times the amount. That, uh, and it is not holding any water out there at all.
During hurricane, uh, that area right there drained very well, very, very well.
Bruce, you make a motion?
Yes, make a motion. Uh, is this a, is this a preliminary?
No, no, this is just for the variant. I haven't, um, we haven't done the preliminary, my guess.
Is that upcoming? Yes, make a motion to approve.
Got a motion, Bruce, to approve.
Catherine?
Yes, sir.
Would this, uh, would this approval on this variance, uh, follow with a preliminary plat?
Uh, I haven't received the preliminary plat yet.
And so, yeah, I think it would be hard to say at this point.
Yeah, I don't, honestly, I do not have it right now. So, um, I did not put it on this agenda.
Catherine?
Yes, sir.
Would this vote? Uh, follow the review and the approval of the preliminary plat?
Well, I think that since we don't have a preliminary plat yet, it would be hard to say. I think if we approve this, if the court approves this variance, then a preliminary plat would have to. Well, have to include this variance.
Yeah, the way I have this written is for drainage variance request for Cedar Sections. Cedar Springs Section Five Development. For the preliminary plat, we consider it a future meeting. So he's asking for a variance for a future plat. Is that correct?
And if we approve this, it'll be included on the.
We've got motion Bruce, second Greg to approve. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor. Likewise, may. And motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eighteen from Ms. Soliday, considering approve the Barton Place Section Two Construction Plans. Drainage plans and replat. Attached in the packet is a copy of the LJ Engineering Letter of Recommendation of Approval. Melinda?
Yeah, I was having fun this morning because I had both the original and the, the replat and couldn't tell, so I had to call, uh. Manuel this morning to figure out which one was which, and the only difference in the original and this one is. The large lot that's on there will have a, a, a big pond on it. That was the only thing that changed. Everything else is still the same size, the same, all the dimensions. Uh, nothing else has changed on lot lines or anything like that, just, uh, a pond. That is off at twenty one eighty four, is it twenty eighty four? The one I asked you about the twenty one eighty, eighty four, I'm sorry.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second Greg to approve, further discussion. Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor. Likewise, may. That motion passed. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, number nineteen, uh, from Melinda, consider approve the variance request for Santa Fe Section. Nineteen A that was submitted to LJ Engineering in February twenty twenty four. Attached in the packet is a copy of the LJ Engineering Letter of No Objection. To the variance request from Colley Ridge Development.
I put the entire copy of the variance request in here. And basically what they're asking is a variance on the former lot sizing. To make it easier for the, the traffic moving.
Especially still looking at the drive.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Motion Bruce, second from Greg, further discussion. All in favor, say aye. Abstain, David, okay. Got that. Number twenty, uh, considering approve the preliminary plat for Santa Fe Section One, uh, nineteen A. Attached in the packet is a copy of LJ Engineering Letter of Recommendation for Approval. Okay, Melinda?
Uh, the, the, uh, preliminary plat with the latest revision that was submitted back in April to LJA. And it appears that it meets all the minimum requirements of Liberty County, including the, uh, variance that you just approved. So they recommend it for.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion Bruce. Second from Greg, further discussion. All in favor, say aye. Abstain, David.
See, we were picking on you last time.
Don't plan on sitting down anytime soon. Number twenty one, consider approve the variance request from Spearpoint Engineering LLC. Requests for variance on the roadway classifications and the requirements. Attached in the packet is a copy of LJ Engineering Letter of No Objection to the variance request, okay?
What it's asking is to change. It from being classified in, um, the difference between the local, see East Gemini Drive and West Gemini Drive. It has to do with, uh, classifying minor collectors or major collectors. Um, the current proposed right away width sixty feet, which is ten feet, ten feet greater than the minimum right away for a local roadway. And only ten feet less than the minimum right away for a minor collector. So they did use the table that's in our, um. Our, uh, regulations and everything, um, it, it seems to be good and, uh. LJA went over it and they have no objections to their next.
Spearpoint, and so this is over and. Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from David to approve, further discussion. Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor. Likewise, may, is that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty two from Ms. Soliday, consider approve the preliminary plat submission for Gemini Subdivision Section One. Section One consists of one hundred and sixty one lots for single family residents. A Liberty County property ID number twenty one six three zero. And fifty two nine thirty eight in the Splendor area of Liberty County. Attached in the packet is L J Engineering Letter of Approval for the preliminary plat. So this is. Well, close to Splendorous, but still in Liberty County.
Still in Liberty County, guys. That little edge that we have over there, sir.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve. Fair.
Motion from Bruce, second from David, any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty three from Miss Sally, consider approve the replat of Royal Oaks Two. Attached in the packet is L J Engineering's Letter recommending approval of the replat.
Where is this one?
Royal Oaks Two. This is the one in Precinct Four, I believe. Um, I have the, I have the, the. There it's um. They had with a bunch of different homes and I think all they did now on that one is just put a pole exactly the one hand.
Are you familiar with this layout?
No, I'm not. That's, that's uh.
And this one I'm having a little bit of trouble with the um, the builder. Because there's a section of private road that they have to go over to get to the subdivisions. And I haven't been given any information. From the private road owner. If they have given Royal Oaks permission to cross that part, but for the entrance into their. I don't know if they're the owner of the road. I haven't been getting that information. I've been trying since they started on that. This is the one I asked you about um. It's over by uh, that loop. I can't remember the name of it. I'm sorry. Um, I had talked to you about this before. It's off the loop and they kept wanting to use the loop's um, address. They cannot do that because the road does not officially go that way. It is a private road.
Oh, Carter Loop?
This is over off Carter Loop.
Yeah.
Hey, I didn't, uh, I remember you speaking to me about this, but I did not have any idea that this was going to uh. Uh, based on the conversation.
We had uh, poor Robin over at the C A D. I feel really bad for her because we've, we're, we're fixing a lot of roadways that, that are not named correctly. Between her and I, and we're doing a lot of private roads. Because anybody that has more than uh, two homes on their property has to officially, because of our new nine one one system, have a private code. But this issue, she has not received any answers and I have not received any answers from anybody that has contacted on this roadway. Cause it, it is literally going over a bridge, not a bridge, but two very large um, culverts and it's all covered with gravel. So I need to know if they have the access to that private road to get to their subdivision.
All right, I think we have done information to move this sometime. Let's tell you what else. Second.
Yeah.
Okay, got a motion Greg. Second from Bruce to table this item. Further discussion? Any none, call for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, no.
Get more information and bring it back.
Okay. Number twenty four. Consider approve the purchase of two Dell monitors for three hundred and fifty nine dollars ninety eight cents. And one laser jet printer for two hundred and fifty one dollars twenty three cents. Total cost is six hundred eleven dollars twenty one cents. Requesting this be paid from J P Technology Funds. Dwayne, is that amenable?
No, no, Bruce. Second.
Motion from Greg, second from Bruce to approve. Further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise, no. Is that motion carries? Thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty five, Mr. C. You want to bring the puppy dog back in here, Harold?
He didn't like me.
Consider approve solicitation of disaster debris monitoring services. Okay.
Okay, so the uh, when we talked about earlier Tetra Tech, the one that does actual monitoring of the debris removal company. Their contract is up July thirty first. Uh, we've been using H G A C's contract. Uh, we have heard of your others. They did not, that was our last year to use it. They did not do a new contract. So we'll have to do it ourselves. Uh, but you know, we did, we, we did it in the past before we went with H G A C. One of the world that did it in the middle of hurricane season, I don't know. But it's okay. We all like to do the first one to be a year and a half contract. So we could do it like February, March.
All in place.
You want to negotiate with the contract we got now?
No. No, we're not for proposals for renewal. Like starting over because that H G A C is gone.
And then changing the date that it would come.
Yeah, just, just want to do the contract. Yeah.
How will this affect our cleanup now?
Let's do that.
How will it affect our cleanup now?
There is a contract. Even if the cleanup goes past July thirty first, there's still a hundred and fifty.
Okay.
All the things.
Make a motion to approve.
Hang on for a year and a half, right?
Yeah.
Motion from Bruce.
I'll say.
Second from Greg, further discussion? Any none, call for vote. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise, no. Is that motion carries? Thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty six, considering approve Bruce Karbowski as the authorized official and designated project representative. For the project application for the T C E Q's. T R P rebate grants program. What is that acronym, T R P?
Yeah, this T R P, T R P, T R P S is uh, the. T E, T C E Q, uh, every year program to buy back old equipment. That doesn't mean meet the emission control. Uh, the twenty first of this month is uh, construction equipment. That's some piece of equipment that I'm gonna turn in for T R P's. Uh, the rest of commissioners will more than welcome to add anything on to it.
Thank you.
We have a representative with Caterpillar that I've been working with that was out yesterday. Um, we need to get this going. The. The buyback, actually, we have two years to spend this money if approved. For it, uh, we don't, do not have to replace the equipment, but uh, as the commissioners. Decide to replace or want to replace, they can. The. T R P's actually buys it back and uh, we have to replace with new equipment.
Yeah, this is just for an application uh, at T R P's. Just so you know, it's Texas Emissions Reduction Plan is what it stands for. Uh.
When you buy the equipment, it reduces price?
You know, they'll, they'll buy, I got a D five dozer nineteen ninety eight. They're gonna offer, they're gonna give me two, I mean a hundred and nineteen thousand dollar for this dozer. I'll, I'll have to, I'll have to, a new dozer is two hundred thousand. So I'll have to. Add a hundred thousand dollars if I want to buy a new dozer. But I have to buy a new one if, if they're gonna take mine.
Okay, and just to clarify the uh.
Let me ask a question if you don't mind. So do you have to replace that uh, piece of equipment that they have uh, bought from you with, with an actual bulldozer? Or just uh, for a, for a backhoe?
No, no, you have to replace that piece of equipment with like. Same equipment. It doesn't have to be the same brand, but it has to be like that within seventy horses, anywhere or another of that exact piece of equipment.
Okay.
Okay, authorized official just means he can sign the paperwork that goes to T R P application for whatever you all approved. And the designated project rep is uh, designated someone, it could be the same person to deal with uh, T C E Q.
I'm going to approve it.
Second. Motion uh, Greg. Second from David to approve. Further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise, no. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty seven from Mr. C, consider approve rejecting bids received for bid number twenty four dash oh seven. Asphalt overlay and rebidding these services. So we didn't like what you got?
Well, uh, what happened is you have to advertise um, you know, paper of general circulation. Uh, once a week, it's on the fourth day before you open bids. Well, the first one was in the paper, the second one didn't make it. Uh, forgot to publish it. And that's happened before. It's no big deal. But we'd already received the bids in before we found that out. So we went reject those, just redo the whole thing, start over.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second Greg to approve further discussion. Any none, call for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, no. Is that motion carries? Thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty eight from uh, Mr. Post in Ms. McCarty County Attorney's Office, consider and approve. Posting of public notice in a newspaper of general circulation. Under two five one point one five two, local government code force of the Texas Transportation. Uh, to hold a public hearing to consider imposing a through trucks restriction. On certain county roads, including a one point eight mile portion of County Road one oh nine. Both are located in Precinct One, Liberty County, Texas. Okay, Catherine?
Okay, so um. The transportation code gives Commissioners Court the authority to adopt certain regulations um. For traffic control devices on public roads in unincorporated areas. And so that's what um, Commissioner Karbowski had come to my office about specifically a one point eight mile portion of County Road one oh nine. Um, he would like to adopt the ordinance for uh, no through trucks. That doesn't mean all trucks. That means. Commercial trucks for the exception of, I believe, agriculture or, or food delivery, that kind of thing. Uh, but in order to adopt. This regulation and put signs up and make this an ordinance for the county, uh, there are a certain number of steps that we have to go through. The transportation code specifically uh, section two five one point one point two requires that there be a public hearing. Prior to that, notice has to be published in a paper of general circulation for thirty days prior to that public hearing. That allows the public um, to express any, any opinions they may have. About this, this regulation or recommendation for post court.
Essentially, this is only the first step, the very first step to get this done.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Motion Greg to approve.
Aye.
Second Leon, further discussion? Any none, call for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thanks, gentlemen. Number twenty nine from uh, Mr. Post, Ms. McCarty. Considering through renewal of interlocal agreement between Texas Parks and Wildlife and Liberty County Road and Bridge Number Four. Leon?
Yeah, this is just the standard interlocal working agreement with the apartment. They uh. They park their equipment, boats and uh, such things uh, on, on the property.
Take a motion to approve. Fair.
Motion Bruce, second from David to approve. No further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise, no. Is that motion carries? Thank you, gentlemen. Number thirty uh. Mr. Posten, consider and approve agreement to repair road damages during construction with entergy. Said agreement will govern repairs to certain roads in Precinct Four. That may be necessitated by damages caused by entergies upgrade of lines in the area. Well, Catherine, you or Leon want to elaborate?
What this is, is uh. Energy is replacing. Uh, they have a big utility line. A large utility line that are all uh. Uh, wooden poles, wooden structures.
Mm-hmm.
And they found that during the last few years, because of the hurricane and other damaging uh, weather that we've had, that. Those wooden structures were unable to continue holding these lines. So what they want to do now is come in with all metal structures. And place through the uh, the right away. And they're wanting to utilize uh, a few of the county roads in order to bring. Some of the uh, uh, equipment and. Uh, uh, structures in to be able to start replacing all these wood structures. They've uh, written a um, a road use agreement. Uh, up. I've submitted it to the county attorney's office for review. And everything looked good. There were some things that uh, Matthew and Catherine wanted to add to. Um. But um. I make, I make the uh. I say that we approve this based on the uh, changes that the county attorneys make uh, to the agreement.
Catherine, you have anything else you want to add?
No. Mr. Poston has cracked, submitted to our office for review and taken a look at it, added some necessary changes. Um, and it is ready for. For your decision.
Make a motion to approve. You're good with it, Leon?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You're good with it?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I'm second.
Motion from Bruce, second Greg. Further discussion? Any none, call for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number thirty one uh, from. County Attorney's Office, consider and approve interlocal agreement to house inmates with Johnson County, Texas. Sheriff, exactly where is Johnson County, Texas?
In, in some, around Fort Worth area of Johnson County. It's about four, a little over four hours away. It's only facility, the jail commission, the one they recommend, I think it's other one, it's out closer to help pass over everywhere a little bit somewhere. But. Right now, we're having a hard time finding anybody to take inmates charged with felonies. Uh, we've got a few in Louisiana. One of the ones we had in Louisiana. Is not a, over accept them. Usall is no longer accept them. They're all, they're all full capacity. And so it's some, it's all over the state.
Yes.
Johnson, Johnson County, uh, they said they'll take our. High, high, high guys.
Yeah, the felonies. Okay, got the felonies.
Move the rip, bro.
Second.
Motion Greg. Second from Bruce to approve. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise, no. Is that motion carries? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all.
Yes, sir. Number thirty two from uh. County Attorney's Office, consider approve amendment to Section three point zero three, the employee handbook to. In the event of an emergency disaster, natural manmade exempt employees shall receive overtime salary in the amount of one and a half, one half. Times their sal, hourly salary, reach overtime hour work, said change is necessary to ensure payment, disaster related cost. I'd like to move this into executive session.
Make the motion, we move this uh, section. Executive session.
Motion from Leon, second Greg to move it to executive session. Further discussion? Any none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise, no. Move that over there. Number thirty three. Consider, and this from Mr. Brown's office over Texas Collector, consider approve over pay refund to customer CoreLogic. Tax service for the account number seven oh six four eight, the amount of five thousand two hundred and eighty two dollars twenty two cents. Account number twenty three four five eight, in the amount of three thousand twenty six dollars seventy one cents. And account number four six two one six, in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and thirty three dollars sixty one cents. Um. Let's see, Rick, here. Well. It's, it's usual, yeah.
That's what we do.
Standstill. Okay, okay. Second. Motion from Greg, second from David. Any discussion? Any none, all in favor say aye? Likewise, no. Okay. And we have a executive session item, several now, believe it or not. Okay? Uh. Executive session item here is, executive session, closed session meeting will occur regarding following matters pursuant to Section five five one point zero seven one. Consultation with attorney regarding policy for the compensation of county employees unable to attend work during normal business hours. Due to natural disasters. We also have. Other items that are subject to the same topic. Catherine, is there one other here? Uh. Second item is an executive session. Meeting will occur regarding following matters pursuant to Section five five one point zero seven one. Again, consultation with attorney. And Section five five one point zero seven two five deliberations regarding contract being negotiated for road repair. Agreement between Liberty County Enterprise Ethane Pipeline LLC. For use of county roadways in Precinct One and Lu, prepaid damages in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. Are there any other clarifications we need on the reasons? Are there any other clarifications we need on the reasons to move into executive session this time?
Yes, Your Honor, um, the additional items that you link to executive session regarding overtime compensation. I would say falls uh, underneath the um. Personnel matter section, I believe that is five one point oh seven.
Okay. All right, so we have these items to discuss in executive sessions. Need a motion to move into executive session this time?
Make a motion to move into executive session.
Motion from Bruce, second from Leon. Uh, it is now ten thirteen. A M. Call for vote, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise, no, is that motion does carry and we are now in executive session. It's now eleven forty three A M. We're out of executive session, back in regular session. We had some items that we had moved to executive session, actually to the regular agenda. From the consent agenda, and then we discussed in executive session. Um, we gave the pretenses that previously that we were going to use to look at these. Uh, the first items are the overtime. Items from Liberty County Sheriff's Office for out of state prisoner transport.
I believe that we approved, you wanted, you wanted, most to take care of all that whole item or?
Yes.
I, I made, I created you an agenda item thirty four, which moves all of the ones except for the first two you approved already. From that section seven point six down to thirty four. So you have the one, two, three, four, five uh, sheriff overtimes and then two constable precinct six. Items to consider.
Okay, we're gonna.
I knew that we approved the six overtime passport. Five.
It's a high, it's only five.
Okay, and then the constable. The new higher constable. To fill an existing position.
We're gonna do all of this at one time, or it's just gonna be three different agenda items?
And that's all, and that's all.
It's, it's, all of them are listed like an A through G on here, the ones that you pulled out and it, and pulled separately. So you can technically motion to approve all of them except for the last one, which I have itemized as G. Which is the payroll increase for Deputy Constable Courtney Lee.
Okay.
Is that correct?
That's.
You're approving all of them except the last one.
Yes, right.
Yeah, okay. That's what we got.
Second.
Okay. I've got a motion Greg, second from Bruce to approve. The five items for overtime paid from Liberty County Sheriff's Office. Also. To approve the constable precinct six, new hire, which is just filling a position. And then not to approve the constable six payroll increase. Uh, precinct six payroll increase for Deputy Constable Courtney Lee. That's a motion by Greg, second by Bruce. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
So, aye Leon? I think you must be muted, are you?
No.
No? Okay.
It nears.
All right, that motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. And Lee. Move along to. Item number eleven, uh. Discussion, potential action regarding policy for the compensation of county employees. Unable to attend work during normal business hours due to natural disasters, in example flooding. Uh, I believe our discussion listed table this for review by County Attorney's Office.
Make a motion to table. Sir.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg to table. Pending further review by the County Attorney's Office, at which time we will bring this back up. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise, no, is that motion does carry. Number twelve, consider approve road use and match the road repair agreement between Liberty County. And Enterprise Ethane Pipeline L L, L C C.
LLC.
LLC, yeah. Uh, you know, it's sometimes that C just kind of just jumps in. For use of county roadways in precinct one in lieu of prepaid damages in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars.
Make a motion to approve. Aye.
Motion from Bruce, second from Leon, further discussion. Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor? Number thirteen, uh, which we had to postpone till after we got this previous one cleared. It is a regular uh. Session item. Uh, consider approve. And permit application submitted to Liberty County on February the sixteenth. Twenty twenty four by Enterprise Ethane Pipeline LLC.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion Greg, second from Bruce to approve, further discussion. Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, no, is that motion carries. Uh. Number thirty two. Number thirty two is consider and approve amendment to section three point zero three of the employee handbook. To in the event. Of an emergency disaster, natural manmade exempt employees. Shall receive overtime salary in the amount of one and one half times their hourly salary for each overtime hour of work. Said change is necessary to ensure payment of disaster related cost. Uh, let's say the course.
Make a motion, take no action. Sir.
Motion to Bruce, saying we're gonna take no action. Further discussion. Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, no, is that motion carries, gentlemen? Catherine, I believe that's it.
That was it.
That's it.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion Greg, second from David to adjourn. I'm not even gonna ask for discussion, all in favor say aye? Your adjourn.